Recording in progress.
I said yes.
All right, welcome everybody. That automated announcement made everybody quiet. Hi, everybody. I'm Pat Trudgeon, City Manager. It's my honor today to welcome you all here to the City Council Chambers in the city of Roseville to do a very special thing that's very important to our democracy. So have the oath of office for three elected officials here in the city of Roseville. This is always a fun day because it's the energy and the excitement that everybody brings to the council chambers. And sometimes the council chambers can be divisive. Sometimes they can be really a point of joy, but today is a point of joy. So we're really happy that you're all here today and looking forward to the oath of office as we move forward here. So this is part of logistics. We will first do a pledge of allegiance. Then we'll do the oath of office for Mayor Dan Rowe, then Councilmember Wayne Graff, and Councilmember Robin Schroder. They'll each be have an opportunity to provide some comments and some thanks to everybody. Then we'll have every city at the dais, and then we'll open the meeting, do a roll call. Then we'll pause and temporarily adjourn so people can take pictures with family members, and all of you can decide whether you want to stay and wait for the rest of the meeting or go away. We have a lot of cake out there, so please enjoy it and take some on the way out. So with that, let's first start with the pledge of allegiance. So please stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so first we'll have Dan Rowe come up for the oath of office. An honor to give him the oath of office, and he'll be joined by his sister Rebecca. Come on around here.
And I state your name. I, Dan Rowe, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
State of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Justly and impartially.
Justly and impartially discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of Mayor.
Of Mayor.
City of Roseville, Minnesota.
City of Roseville, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To help me God. I had to write some notes just to make sure I could remember what I was going to say. So bear with me here. It's only a couple of pages. Very large study. I do want to thank all of you for being here tonight. It's nice to see a good crowd of Roseville residents and supporters and people who are interested in our local government. I should thank my sister Rebecca for being here this evening and representing a lot of other family members who are in warmer places farther south this evening, and I really can't blame them, but really do appreciate the support. Rebecca is my housemate as well as my sister, so we get to spend a lot of time together, and she puts up with a lot of my city council-related stuff. So I appreciate that she does that and thank her for her support and especially for all the rest of my family members as well. I do want to offer congratulations to Councilmember Graff on his reelection and also Councilmember Alex Schroder on her assuming office this evening. Elections are how people select their representatives, as I've kind of alluded to in his earlier remarks. It takes a lot of hard work, as we know by the candidates and their supporters, for both successful and unsuccessful campaigns. But as we know in our democracy, once the election is over, or as we should know in our democracy, once the election is over, the work of governing begins, and it's a different mode of operation. All of us in the council represent all of the city, and we're obligated to do our best to work together and bring all of our perspectives to our work and work towards the best solutions for the whole community. I want to thank all of my council colleagues over the last 16 years of productive working relationships. We've always had times when we agreed and when we disagreed, and we've worked through those, and I think it's been to the betterment of the community that we've had the ability to do that and ultimately have a productive work on the council and a collegiality that has led to hopefully relationships not being strained through that whole process. I also want to thank our great city staff. They're serving the community with a great degree of professionalism and dedication, and I think all the results that we see as a community in terms of what happens in Roseville and as we move forward, the great things that we continue to do is to a great deal a result of that hard work and that professionalism and dedication of those city employees. And most importantly, I want to thank the people of Roseville, not only for the trust that they've put in me a few times now for mayor, but also their trust once again to serve another term. But more importantly, I think it's we need to thank the people of Roseville for the things that they do every day that have nothing to do with the five of us on the city council that make Roseville such a great place to be. I think without the people of Roseville, and that includes residents, that includes small business owners, that includes people who are active in organizations and support their schools, all the people of Roseville make Roseville the great place that it is and the reason that we're able to be proud of Roseville as our home. So with that, we've got a lot of things to do, and I look forward to getting down to it. So thank you again very much. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Next, we'll have Wayne Graff come up, and he will be joined by his great niece, Greta Larson, in the oath of office.
I, Wayne Graff.
I, Wayne Graff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Justly and impartially.
Justly and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of councilmembers.
Of councilmembers.
Of the city of Roseville, Minnesota.
The city of Roseville, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
And this I will.
And this I will.
Well, thank you. I have two pages too, but they're not too long. It's always hard to go second because then all your stuff is up. Dan has already mentioned everything, but I'll read through and skip a few things here. Of course, I want to thank Greta. You know, it was really nice of you to take off time for your busy school schedule and all the other things to come and do this for me. So I really appreciate it, and it's very special. Greta was one of the flower girls at our wedding here in Roseville, and I think she was only about two or maybe close to three years old at that time. So we've had a good time together, and I appreciate it. Time flies, right? I would also like to thank the residents of Roseville, of course, for electing me. I spoke with many of you as I was door knocking the city this summer and appreciate your thoughtful input. This evening, we gathered to celebrate the installation of new city council members, but we also gathered to celebrate a fair, just election that was that was accessible to more voters than ever, and this doesn't just happen. Every day, citizens volunteer to work as election judges, go to training, and work long hours to help us, the voters, get our ballots filled out correctly and make sure voting machines work properly. In my opinion, these people are the unsung heroes of elections, and I give them a great big thank you. I know many members of the legal women voters are here this evening, and we thank them for their tireless efforts to assure access to voting for all legal voters. This is what makes democracy work, and I look forward to working with all of you to make Roseville an even more vibrant and welcoming community for all. Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilmember Graff. Next, we'll have Robin Schroder, newly elected to the council, joined by our husband, Peter Ryan, and daughter Jessica. Come on up.
Hi, Robin Schroder. Do solemnly swear.
Hi, Robin Schroder. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Minnesota.
Of the state of Minnesota.
That I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Justly and impartially.
Justly and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Councilmember.
Councilmember.
Of the city of Roseville, Minnesota.
The city of Roseville, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To help me God.
To help me God. Okay, I didn't get the memo that I was supposed to write a two-page speech. Half a page. So first of all, I want to thank my family for the support and encouragement to take this journey. My husband, Peter, my daughter Jessica, and Matt were boots on the ground and got me a great truck for the Roseville parade. My daughter Anne, who's from Colorado, did my website and campaign literature, and her husband Luke. My sister Chris, who always knows just what to say. My brother Bill, who gave me positive energy. My sister Jill from Texas, and my uncle Ernie, who is a longtime Roseville resident who supports me on so many levels. You know, next I wanted to thank my supporters, including the Women's Business Group nicknamed the Rougees, which some of them are here tonight, and my friends who have faith in me and walked with me both in person and in spirit. And I want to thank the council members and the mayor for being positive and sharing their experiences. Also the staff and department heads who took the time to share the vision of Roseville. And mostly I want to thank the residents of Roseville who elected me to represent them, who through this process I was able to meet, hear their histories, and ask about their vision for the future. You know, I've been connected to this community my whole life, and I'm humbled and honored to be elected to the city council. Roseville is a strong, vibrant city, and I look forward to being part of keeping Roseville a healthy, welcoming place to live and visit. Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilmember Schroder. We will now start the meeting here, and as I said, we'll take a break here once we do roll call. All right. I hereby call to order the Roseville City Council meeting from Monday, January 9th, 2023. Mr. City Manager, would you call the roll, please? Councilmember Strong. Councilmember Eton. Present. Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Schroder.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here.
And Councilmember Strong indicated prior to the meeting that she would not be able to be here this evening due to illness, and we all wish her a quick recovery and hope that we can see her soon. Also with us, joining us for the first time this evening is our new city attorney, Rachel Tierney from Kennedy and Graven, who joins us after her firm was were the contractor city attorney services beginning at the beginning of this year. And so we welcome you, Rachel, and if you'd like, you can say a few things by way of introduction or whatever makes sense.
Thanks. I also did not get the two-page memo. I'll just say I'm an attorney with Kennedy and Graven. We're a law firm. We're housed in downtown Minneapolis, but all we do is local government. We represent cities and school districts and economic development authorities and public entities and just a handful of other sort of public entities. I've been doing local government my entire career. I started in a year I don't need to mention as a prosecutor in the city of St. Paul, and I spent the last 23 years with St. Paul. I've been I have I feel like I've worn almost all the hats in the city attorney's office, so I hope I can really contribute to Roseville, and I'm excited to be here. And just thank you for being such a welcoming group of people, and I'm excited to get to know you all better and do some good work.
Thank you. Thank you, Pete.
You're welcome.
And with that, we'll take a short break here so that we can do some pictures and some housekeeping before we begin the real business of our meeting. Thank you. All right, we're officially back from our break. Appreciate everybody's indulgence for a little bit of sharing the families and friends and trying to coax people to stay for the rest of the meeting. Only marginally successful at that, but we appreciate the folks who are sticking it out. With that, we have the rest of our agenda to get through. We did the roll call, and then we took a break. So next on the agenda is approving tonight's agenda. And I'll check, as I always do, with staff first to see if there are any changes or items that have to be altered on the agenda in any way. No changes, Mr. Mayor. All right, and I'll check with my fellow councilmembers. Are there any items the council members would like to change on the agenda or any items to remove from the consent agenda for separate consideration this evening? And we do a quick check with the public as well, in case anybody is here this evening for any of the items in Section 10 towards the end of our agenda known as the consent agenda. We have items 10A through L this evening, and normally these are fairly administrative items, but because this is a public meeting, we want to make sure we get public participation where it's appropriate. If anybody is here for one of those items to either ask a question or make a comment to the council, we want to make sure and give you a chance to do that early in the meeting rather than making you wait till the end. And so we just check if there is anyone here this evening for an item in Section 10 of tonight's agenda, items 10A through L, that we can take up that item earlier in the meeting. Is there anyone here for any item in the consent agenda this evening? And Mr. Trudgeon, do we have any remote participants from the public this evening?
I know we had two that signed up, 210 remotely, but there's nobody online.
Nobody online, yes. All right, so we won't have to check with online participants, but we always do that as well. With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
It's a move.
Second. It's a move by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Eton, to approve tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. That pass is unanimous, and we have our agenda this evening. Next on the agenda is an opportunity for general public comment. At the beginning of each meeting, one of the things we always do is provide an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items that are not on tonight's agenda. We'll certainly provide opportunity for comment as agenda items come up, but we also at the beginning of each meeting provide an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items either related to city business or of interest to people in the city but not on tonight's agenda. I'll check with the folks in the audience. Is there anyone here to speak for public comment on a non-agenda item this evening? It does not appear to be the case. All right, then we can move right into our agenda. The next item is item 5A, which is to consider a proclamation related to Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Roseville, and I will read the proclamation, and then a motion to approve it would be in order. Proclamation reads, whereas the city of Roseville recognizes and honors the work of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was the chief spokesperson for nonviolent activism and the Civil Rights Movement, which successfully protested racial discrimination in federal and state law, and whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was jailed and arrested numerous times for speaking out against racism and discrimination and for trying to help African Americans to register to vote, and whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in December of 1964, and whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was assassinated on April 4th, 1968 because of his fight for equality and the rights for all, and whereas an act of Congress of the United States in 1983 declared the 3rd Monday in January to officially honor Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s life, where he said, 'Life is most,' excuse me, 'life's most persistent and urgent question is what are you doing for others, and whereas each year Americans across the country answer that question by coming together on Martin Luther King Jr. Day to serve their neighborhoods and their communities, now therefore be resolved, the City of Roseville hereby declare January 16th, 2023 to be Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Roseville, and we encourage all citizens to join together to honor Dr. King by committing to volunteering in the community on that day or other days.'" All right, moved by Councilmember Eton, seconded by Councilmember Groff. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. That passes unanimously, four to zero, and that proclamation is approved. That then brings us to our rest of our business items on our agenda, and the next business item or the first business item under Section 7 is 7A, which is to receive a presentation from the League of Women Voters on the City ADA or Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. I appreciate the patience of representatives of the League of Women Voters. We put a bunch of ceremony and called her all in front of their presentations this evening. We appreciate their indulgence, but we figured you'd be a little bit understanding given your civic mind. With that, I'll take turn over to Mr. Trudgeon first to make introductions.
Yeah, just real briefly, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for doing their study. Jim DiBenedetto is here to present the findings of that study. I did meet with Jim and a few other folks earlier in the fall and throughout the whole part of the study, we did share a lot of information back and forth. So I think Jim's going to share the car point that is in your packet. He's not going to go through all 31 slides, but he'll just kind of highlight it. Certainly, there was a conversation, discussion to have after that, we'd be happy to have that. So with that, I'll just have Mr. DiBenedetto begin his presentation.
Thanks. And this says, "Please do not touch or adjust the microphone." Is it me out for a little bit? Okay, let's do that. Okay, thank you. As I said, I'm Jim DiBenedetto, I live at 320, or excuse me, that was a long time ago, Maplewood Avenue, Roseville, and during the past two years, the League of Women Voters of Roseville area, members in Falcon Heights, Lauderdale, Little Canada, Maplewood, and Roseville, conducted a study assessing the compliance level of our five cities with the sections of the American Disabilities Act that guarantees access to public buildings and cites specifically the study examined compliance policy, administration, and physical accessibility by residents for a mobility challenge to government buildings, polling locations, and city recreational venues such as parks and playgrounds. The study steps included contact with city administrators to answer specific complacency questions, review of city documents and city websites, and in-person visits by committee members to all buildings and park facilities to document ADA-specific requirements. At times, other contacts included the Ramsey County Elections Administrator and Minnesota Disabilities Council website outlining Minnesota requirements. Individual city analysis were included in a report distributed to league members and to each of our five cities. The report and its raw data are available on our website, lwvrosville.org. Click on the advocacy drop-down button. A PowerPoint presentation is also available through the league. We found that most cities meet most ADA requirements, could easily improve on non-compliance in parking situations in parks and in access to polling locations. Should work to improve website access to ADA policies, contact coordinators and grievance procedures, and cities should include residents with disabilities in oversight, planning, and visionary groups to better understand their needs. I'm going to skip the next section of this one-page. We welcome dialogue on any parts of the ADA study report and urge you to include our recommendations as you plan and draft city policies and budgets. The study members include Stephanie and Jim DiBenedetto, study chairs, and Bonnie Coke, Roseville, Mary Peterson, Little Canada, and Cleveland, and Rachel Geiser, Maplewood. And as that said, we do have a few, let's see how this goes. So I just, next. I wanted to point out that the ADA was enacted into law in 1990 to prohibit discrimination against people with disabilities in areas including transportation, communications, and access to state and local government programs and services. There is a fairly significant set of documents, if you wanted to look into that, that explains why and what has to be done, including architectural standards and so on. And I think most of this was adopted, as I understood it, back in 1990 with support from Vietnam-era veterans who were trying to be able to have the same access as other citizens to sports venues and be able to vote and participate in community life. And what I'm showing you here is, this is, on the left is a playground in Little Canada that's been recently remodeled, and it's fully handicapped accessible. On the right, there's a steep ramp that makes it difficult for a person in a wheelchair or scooter to get into this park in Roseville. We didn't look at other limitations, disability limitations such as blindness and hearing, and those issues could be studied at another time. We've mainly looked at residents with mobility challenges. Some questions we forwarded mostly to city managers or administrative supervisors. The one thing is, does your city have an ADA compliance, oh, let me back up. Number three, how many employees does your city have? There's a provision in the law that lets smaller cities comply more easily, but larger cities, including Roseville and Maplewood, for example, have to have a compliance plan and has to have a compliance process that is easily understood and accessible to all residents. So when you look at the table, it spells all this out for some of our cities, and I'm going to remind you that this whole PowerPoint presentation is on our website, and anyone who wants to have access to it or has some difficulty getting access to the study could contact me or other committee members to have help getting access. The main problem was with the parking is noncompliance, mostly in parking in the restroom, mostly parking lots don't always have the correct signage for handicap. Yes, you may have a blue sign, but there are supposed to be a certain number of signs for parking stalls that are accessible for people in vans, and no city that we tested had specifically van-accessible parking stalls. This is a photograph from one of the other cities nearby. There's a sign, but there's no way to get from that parking stall into that city hall. This may be familiar to people here. These sinks should have protective covering around the drains so that a person in a wheelchair doesn't get their legs burned from hot water draining out of the sink. Access to voting. There's a problem in this particular, where the slope is rather steep, and a person in a wheelchair probably cannot safely cross from the parking stall that's marked for voting, across the street into the polling place. So there are a number of issues with playgrounds. Some have a limited amount of accessibility. Many playgrounds have these concrete curbs. I could point here, but you won't see that. But, oh, here's a good one, on the left. There's no way a kid in a wheelchair can get across to the playground equipment without significant help. And if significant help is an elderly grandparent who also can't lift and carry the kid over, they're just simply not going to participate in the parks growing. I'll skip through here and see if we can hit just Roseville. Every city had some problems with compliance. Roseville has an aging population, 21% are over the age of 65, I think you probably all know that. Of those under the age of 65, 6.8% have a disability. This includes residents with disabilities on, we're recommending that you include residents with disabilities on planning groups of transit, trail plans, and development parks and open spaces. An updated grievance form include issues with building access so that people can easily let you know that they've got a problem and that you can deal with it. Regularly re-strike parking lots. There was a, I'd have to back up a ways now to show you, there was a parking lot that had a porta potty in the back end of the parking lot, but there's no striking. I think that may be a violation of your own ordinances. So we propose the following consensus statements, and we're simply, these are for our own internal policies for the league, but also we will be lobbying based on those policies. And we're saying, "Support compliance by city governments and Americans with Disabilities Act by making an identification with an ADA coordinator and grievance process easily found on your website." And that's a exit.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Also, thank you for the work of the committee and everyone involved. I really do appreciate the information and the study and the recommendations. And I also did want to acknowledge that I think we all know that there are not only people with mobility issues, but people certainly, as you mentioned, with sight and hearing issues and others that we need to be conscious of. And I know as we're looking at our update to our website, in addition to the content related to the ADA, you know, grievance process and things like that, I need to add the functionality to our website that works for people both with hearing and visual impairments, because I think that's important, as well as to most everything else we do. I think sometimes, especially those aspects of people's, you know, life that they can't, if they have difficulty with hearing or vision, that can really impede their ability to engage with their local government and our ability to engage with them too. So that's definitely a part of it, and though, you know, that wasn't necessarily focused in the study, it certainly is something that's at least on my mind and hopefully on the staffs as well. So I wanted to thank you for that. Any other questions or thoughts from council members?
Well, I just want to thank Jim and Stephanie for all their work over the years on this issue, and we know Stephanie had challenges and that she did a great job letting us know when there were issues, and I really want to extend my thanks for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Trudgeon.
This is interesting. I was walking through one of our parks in Villa during the snowstorms, and there was a person with a wheelchair actually going through the park. So I'll have to say, I was very impressed with our Parks Department and our Public Works that they had plowed it so well that the wheelchair could get through easily. So it does make sense that we are aware of what it takes for these things, but it was also good to be able to acknowledge some of the things we're doing right.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you. And I think one of the things also, just in the line of sort of snow removal and things like that, that's definitely very unfortunate for people with mobility issues, that often the last work that is done in cleaning up after a snowstorm is pedestrian ramps at intersections and some of those things, access to transit stops and things like that, because it definitely is something that, you know, we all know how difficult as relatively mobile people it is to get around in, you know, after a snow event, but just imagine if you are in a wheelchair or a scooter, or, you know, if your caregiver or provider isn't able to get to your house or whatever. I think these are all things that, you know, as we make policy, it's not just about physically complying, but it's also about making sure that the way we do our business is as equitable as we can be to everybody who needs our services. So I appreciate that as well. And it's definitely something that I am very mindful of as I look at the performance of various people around the community and their snow removal that they're obligated by city law to do as well. So again, it's all related, it's not just, as I said, physical adjustments or signage, it's also about how we enforce our policies. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here this evening. Great, with that, next, we're starting with the updates this evening, and our next update is an update on the community-wide visioning process, otherwise known as Envision Roseville. And I'll turn it over to first our Assistant City Manager Rebecca Olson to introduce the report, and then I believe our consultant is going to dive in with the details. So turn it over to Rebecca Olson.
Thank you, Mayor Councilmembers. You are correct, tonight we're here to receive an update from Zan and Associates regarding the community visioning project currently underway. Hopefully you have heard about it. As you know, Dan and his team have been working with staff since the end of July when council approved a contract with Zan and Associates to conduct that community-wide visioning project. The purpose of this project is to review our current community aspirations and also to develop and prioritize outcomes that will demonstrate how the city can be assured that we're making progress towards those aspirations. So with that, I'm going to turn it over, I'm going to let Dan do his update and then open it up for any questions at the end.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect. Well, thank you for having me back again. It's great to be here, and I feel really fortunate that I got to see the swearing-in and the ceremony, because that was cool and it reminded me that this work is important and why it's important. So thank you for that. So I'm going to jump in, and I've got a handful of slides, maybe a dozen or so, and my intention here is to kind of just really quick give a reorientation for anybody who needs it and then talk on, talk about status today, and then at the end of that, we can have discussion and talk about whatever clarification you need, all of that good stuff. So before I get into details, just kind of the click notes version, our phase one of community engagement is nearing the end. We're not quite done yet, but it's substantially complete, and I think that we've been successful in the way that we've intentionally targeted certain community segments and trying to specifically get with community organizations that have membership or representation from traditionally underrepresented communities. So I think that's been a success. We'll talk about numbers, and I've got some updates even from what you have in your packets. While the numbers haven't been huge, I do think we have quality, and we're working to bump numbers up in terms of surveys and things like that, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. So I'll jump in. There we go. All right, this is an overview of what I've got for posterity, I suppose. We don't need that slide. Rebecca kind of already touched on this, right? But this is, as short as I can make it, the reason that we're doing this study is to develop a set of community aspirations with specific outcomes. What does it look like underneath each of those aspirations? While we're doing it, we're hoping to engage with a diverse range of communities, and then the kind of the overall intent is that this is going to be something that you all can use as you move into future planning efforts down the road. So this is- So this is recap reminder of what the work plan for this project looks like. There are three overlapping phases. Right now, we're firmly in the middle at Phase Two there. So it's, you know, there's a lot of details for those who are following along. I don't expect that you will read the fine print, but three overlapping phases. Right now, we're kind of rounding out the first phase of community engagement, which happens in the middle there. So that's what we've got going on. Next up is that we'll move into the third phase, and that's where we close the feedback loop with everybody that we've connected with. We'll start to tabulate the Phase One results. And that's where the fun happens in my world, where we can start to come up with themes. And then we go back and say, talk to the people that we've talked to already and say, well, what do you think? Did we get it right? What did we miss? And start to get into some of those outcomes. So that's what the study looks like. This is another view of that same slide, just on a timeline. So we are closing out the first phase of community engagement. And as soon as the snow starts to melt here, we'll get into the second phase of community engagement, as I just talked about, to kind of close the loop. All right, so this is the part where I'm going to run through maybe five slides that just kind of talk about everything that we've done so far. And then I'll give you a sneak peek of early results, and then we can have some discussion. So committees, we've got two. We've got a project management team, that's the department heads, that we're going to meet with throughout the study to help calibrate. They're the ones who kind of give the overall umbrella oversight, make sure that we're talking about the city correctly, making sure that we're doing the right things. We've also got a community advisory group. The community advisory group is made up of representatives from different community organizations, and it was kind of intentionally assembled based on input from the PNT. And I'll talk more about what we did in a minute. Just some pictures. This is the community advisor group. We've only done one meeting so far, but it was a great group. I really love that group. They rolled up their sleeves and were happy to really dig into some of the content. And I think this type of engagement represents that strategic intentional approach that you directed us to do, to target certain communities and to really go deep. So that's what we're trying to do. This is just like a deliverables chart. This is kind of boring, but the point is, we had a whole bunch of stuff that we said we were going to do, developing material, developing poster boards, there's websites, there's Hello Lamp posts, which we'll talk later, a little bit more about translations and all of that. And this is just to say that we have done a lot of stuff. So as your staff is signing invoices, you can see that there's some accountability and we're getting there. And this is what it looks like. Hopefully you've seen some of our branding around town. Again, I don't anticipate that anybody's reading the details here, but I just wanted to give a flavor of what it looks like as we're rolling some of this stuff out. So community partnerships. This was a cornerstone of our approach. And as a recap, the idea here was that the best way to connect with the people out there who aren't going to come to that traditional public meeting is to go to them, right? And to go to the organizations that they already frequent. And so that's what we tried to do. And we tried to be very intentional about building partnerships with community organizations. And we came up with a big, long list and started to reach out to people, started to email, started to call, you know, with, it's 20-plus is what I have on my slide, but like many dozen emails. And that all whittled down to a handful of really substantive conversations that we've had with community organizations. I would say just anecdotally, the most fruitful of those, at least in my opinion, has been cultural liaisons at the schools. They are just amazing. So really helpful in helping us connect with families, different cultural backgrounds, and just their willingness. I know these people are pulled in every which direction, so I'm really grateful for their support. So we've met with them a few times. I also really appreciated the city's Human Rights Commission. I know I'm getting the name wrong. It's a longer name, but the meeting with them was great as well. They were super helpful. So you can see the list there. We're still working through it timely with your previous presentation is, just to point out, we are being intentional about connecting with a few different groups that represent people with disabilities. So that's one that's like an impending open item, if you ask me, on our community partnership list. So 10 sort of engagement-type meetings done so far, in addition to the many dozen conversations, phone calls, emails. So that phase of the project is, if somebody responds, we're not going to say no, we're not going to talk to you about them. It's substantially done. And then we'll start to noodle on the results and then go back to these folks again in the next several weeks. So that's community partnerships. Events and activities. As you're aware, I've seen some of you out there, we've been trying to hit some of the bigger events around town. This is that same principle I mentioned earlier, that the best way to engage with folks in the community is to go to them and not to expect them to come to us at a stuffy public meeting, although some of us, like me, think those are fun. Most people don't. So we've been out there, we've done five kind of official events so far. We have two more planned this month, and then one kind of in the planning stages, not scheduled yet. So tomorrow night, actually, is the library. So it's kind of an open house, mini speed round. I hope some of you can make it. If not, we'll let you know how it went, which is going to be great. And then we're planning to meet with the African-American family group at Roseville High School on, I think it's Monday, February 13th. So that's the next big event that we have. And then we're going to do something at the Adult Learning Center with the school. We're working with staff to get that coordinated. The thinking is, let's let people settle in from holiday break, and then we'll pick it up. So just pictures of our stuff. This is kind of like the eye candy, the fun stuff that we've been doing, you know, trying to meet with people. One thing we always do is we try to have food. We try to feed people, you know, without going crazy on catering budgets and stuff like that, culturally relevant if we can, depending on the audiences. So that's fun. That's what we've been up to. A big kind of thing that we do is we think that playing is important, both for adults and kids. So you'll see all of our stuff has some kind of interactive element because it draws people in. And let's be honest, if the kid is entertained, then we can talk to the parents. So that's helpful too. And then virtual engagement. So we've got a handful of virtual engagement platforms. One of them is our project website. The project website has kind of four components. There's a project overview section there where you can sign up for more information. And then there's three interactive portions. You can do project survey, which is our kind of big, meaty survey to get really deep feedback. We've got what's called an idea wall. This is like the virtual version of putting post-its on board that us planners like to do. And then we've got a Wiki map where you can drop pins. So the numbers are not, you know, if you were to ask me, I think somebody did, what a home run looks like when we were interviewing. We're not there yet. It's also not a complete disaster, and I'm excited because I just checked today, staff and my team have been out there promoting this thing. And actually, since we published this memo, it's more than doubled. So we're up to like 156 as of five minutes before this meeting. So some of our efforts to get more is helping. So I feel good about that. And then Hello Lamp posts. Hello Lamp posts is cool. We had, hopefully you saw the signs out there where you could text and it was like an AI bot that would respond that we worked to program with some of our content. And that was out, and it worked, but again, the numbers weren't knocked down the door great, but I do think that the responses that we did get were input that we wouldn't have gotten, people we wouldn't have reached otherwise. And I say that because I look at some of the most used objects, is the lingo that you use, you know. So there were some at parks, there were objects at parks, at bus stops. You've probably seen in City Hall here. And the two, the most used were the bus stops and the schools. So I count that as a success because those are folks who probably wouldn't have engaged with us otherwise. So they were out, and then we got snow, and the plows covered all the lungs in the boulevards, and then went and wrestled them out of snowbanks the best I could, so they're not out now. The plan is to get them back out for Phase Two as the snow melts, and hopefully we can get some more mileage on Hello Lamp posts. So that's what's going on there. I have started to noodle on the results. I'll share some with you. It's cool. You do get some spam, I think council member, you were asking, well, what if somebody just blows it up with junk? We could get some of that, but not as much as you might have thought. And there was some really thoughtful kind of nugget, bite-sized responses, which I'm happy to get to share. So that's the virtual engagement stuff. I'm kind of droning on here. I tend to ramble. Business engagement is intentionally lagging. Our proposed approach for business engagement was to start with the Phase One of the community engagement, start to understand what the key themes are, and then shape our business engagement approach to sort of respond to that. So with that in mind, we're just kind of digging into the business engagement. Two main prongs of that right now. The first prong is we're developing a kind of what I'm calling an exploratory survey. That's live and being promoted right now. It launched, I think, about 10 days ago. We've already got a couple of dozen responses, so it's doing what it's supposed to do. We're going to use that combined with the Phase One community engagement results to try to focus in and do a limited number, but a handful or two handfuls of focus groups with businesses. And our plan is to intentionally target traditionally underrepresented communities, small businesses, minority-owned businesses, things like that. But we really want to see what the data tells us, you know, from the Phase One community engagement results. So we're dragging our feet a little bit on purpose with the business engagement, but it is getting started now. So you'll see Jana King, who's the person on our team working on that, with Economic Development Services out there, kind of starting to make contacts, and that's kicking off now. Okay, so sample results. This is not done. Okay? So I'm caveating because I did like a quick scan of the survey results to date. I started to tabulate Hello Lamp posts. We're going to do a whole lot of coding, what we call theming, to start to analyze these results. This was more of like a squinty eye review of the data because I wanted to see it. I read through everything and started to sort into themes, but I make those caveats because this could change a lot. And there's a whole lot of detail that you're going to be looking for that I just don't have for you yet. So that's the caveat. Themes and outcomes. So Rebecca mentioned that the goal of the project is to develop, update, revise the community aspirations. Those are the themes. And we'll have more eloquently worded verbiage around that based on our Phase Two of community engagement. But what we're hoping to see is through our intentional kind of engagement, some gravity or some common themes that pop out. And we did start to see that, and I'll talk about some of these, but there wasn't a lot of variance. They started to pop up right away, and they were pretty consistent, which is good. You know, that tells me that we're on the right track. One, more or less, they align with your existing community aspirations. I don't think you're going to see any crazy surprises on there. Two that weren't explicitly mentioned in your existing community aspirations were parks and green space weren't explicitly in there. There's one about environmental sustainability. And education wasn't explicitly in there. Both of those are coming up as recurring sort of important themes. So you have a memo in your packet that still isn't very detailed, but does have a little bit more meat on the bones for some of these. But, you know, for parks, it's things from funding sources to more green space around the city to splash pads. Everybody wants a splash pad. I'm sure you've heard that. But then we get into things like transportation, and it's everything from fix the potholes to please help us with multimodal transportation and walking, bicycling, things like that. Community engagement and neighborhood unity, this one was kind of a lump. It was a little bit more dispersed, but it had everything to do with civic engagement and transparency, which I'm sure is near and dear to all of you, to better information on the website, to more community events because they're fun and we like doing them. So it was kind of all over there. There was support for a number of local businesses, comments like talking about, can we do more in the newsletter to promote, to sustain, to help local businesses? Can we do more events for local businesses? Things like that, as well as zoning and tax breaks and some of the technical things that you all wrestle with. Housing and development was all over the board, from we need more of it and more density to please change nothing, as you can imagine. So that's kind of some of the themes that we're seeing. And then a lot about sustainability and environment and protecting future generations. And then education, a lot about investing in schools. And I understand that, you know, that's, the school board is sort of not the same as the city council, but I think it's important to collect that information and let it be part of the process. So that's a quick summary, and I've got maybe one or two more slides, and then I will look forward to your discussion here. A little bit, this is just the survey. I didn't code the Hello Lamp posts, and we're still working on coding the events for who is responding. But from the, oh, I guess I said it's survey and Hello Lamp posts. About 85% of the respondents were residents as postal visitors. The fair geographic coverage across the state, you'll see a map at some point where we plot out who said what, from where. And, you know, at a squinty eye look, you get pretty good coverage. I said across the state, I meant across the city. At least I didn't say Ridgefield again. That's no state. So there are some areas that we're going to want to target in Phase Two where maybe there's, okay, we really need to get somebody in the southeast quadrant or whatever it is, but pretty good coverage across the state. The age bands that I looked at, the largest was 30%, kind of my age range, 35 to 44. About 20% of survey respondents, this didn't include Hello Lamp posts, identified or self-identified as Black, Indigenous, or people of color based on aggregation of the different demographic questions that we ask. So, you know, that's better than nothing. 80% of the survey respondents lived in single-family homes, and it's about the same number for owner-occupied. So about 80% were single-family, and the number was a little bit different, but about 80% of those were owner-occupied. So that's a snapshot of who is responding. And the last one is next steps. And so this is pretty high level, but the immediate next steps are to finish up events for Phase One, to continue to push the survey. We're going to have it open at least for another month, and that was in part to give us time to try to get a little bit more in terms of numbers. And then kind of concurrently, we're going to start to crunch and do the coding, which is kind of the geeky part that I get excited about, to really dig into the themes and the outcomes. And then, you know, we'll use that to guide what we're going to do in Phase Two, who we're going to reach out to, who we need to target to dig deeper into. So that's what I have for you today. Happy to answer any questions, provide any clarification. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. And I'll turn it over to the council for any questions or clarification needed. Councilman Edgerton.
Mr. Edgerton, thank you for this work, and really appreciate a lot of the places you went to look for as we asked for, looking for folks who might not traditionally answer a survey. Appreciate a lot of the looks. Had to look up the Manok Club, a great organization supporting young African-American men at the middle school. And of course, many of those young people live here in Roseville. So I appreciate that you did that kind of digging. That's, I think, really something that was important to me and important to the council, and you clearly responded and have been going out there in other lists. I would like to note you went to the Roseville Homecoming and have pictures from there, but they didn't end up in the demographic slice, the 18 to 24 range? Or if they were 17, they don't count?
They count. I didn't tabulate the event demographics into that. That was just from the survey. So that's my caveat.
Okay. I was really pleased you were doing that. I'm like, where?
Yeah, yeah. They're there, and also Hello Lamp posts, so.
Okay. I appreciate that. I think that's fantastic. As we look at, you talk about coming back and looping back, I hope that we would continue to look for opportunities to connect with a broad slice. It's interesting looking at the demographics that it might actually be underrepresented in our senior population. And we have several senior buildings that would be more than happy to see you. If we're looking, many people who are living there have been in our community for decades and are highly invested in Roseville, continue to volunteer, continue to be engaged in many ways. So maybe that is a way to get some more feedback. I'd love to see us, when we talk about the owner-occupied versus rental, connecting with an organization like Sienna Green. Aon runs that apartment complex. It's a fantastically run place, a place that we have some connections with. We've done parking policies and things like that, so we have some existing relationships there, looking at maybe some of these other places to continue this kind of breadth and looking to find some of our folks who are not in owner-occupied situations. I would love for us to continue that kind of search.
Yeah, thank you for that. And just for disclosure, we did connect with and leverage some of those relationships at Sienna Green.
Okay.
We had Hello Lamp posts objects, we did some flyering there, and so they've been more than willing to engage.
Thank you for doing that.
But thank you so much for your comments and noted on the reaching out to some of the older residents and being intentional about that. Thank you.
It's probably worth noting, it's not necessarily always sort of care-type facilities for seniors, but actually there's a lot of independent living just across, very convenient at City Hall. And we do hear from those folks quite a bit, especially some who are relatively new because it's a new building, you know, but still have been in the community for some time. it's a new building, you know, but still have been in the community for some time. We do hear from those folks. Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you for doing all this work, and I want to echo what, you know, Councilmember Ed said about the seniors. Of course, you have to realize not all of them are tech savvy too, so how you are approaching them and asking for information, you may have to look at that too because they're not going to, you know, whip out their phone and take, you know, yeah, or some of that. So please be aware of how you are going to engage them. And observation, I'm glad to hear you are starting to get more numbers because the, like, the survey numbers and things, it just seemed like too small of a number to really get a good indication of what the community wants. So I would encourage that we continue to try to bump up those numbers so we get a better picture of, you know, what the community, because if you just have the small amount of people that are answering, they may not represent the whole community. So we just want to make sure we're representing, you know, all the different groups and that they all have the ability to add to the pile, as they say. So anyways, thank you.
Other questions, Councilmember Braden?
Well, thanks for the work. Good start, of course, as Councilmember Shaw said, it would be good to have larger numbers. However, I have to say, reading through the themes and outcomes, I'm just going through an election cycle and door knocking all of a sudden along, I said the themes and outcomes that I'm hearing from people. So I don't think we're too far off, even though we don't have huge numbers on responses. But it would be good to have more. I also would like to see more rental input if we can, and I know that's difficult. I mean, that's always a more difficult group to reach than homeowners. It's the same with even when you're running for office, it's harder to reach people there. But we do have about 30% of our population is rental, so that's a gap there in the people that we're reaching. Other than that, I thought it was a good start, and I look forward to more information.
Yeah, thank you. And we will happen and will continue to be very intentional about trying to reach folks who rent, folks who are unhome, folks that aren't traditional homeowners. And I do want to just say, and I'll be quite, thank you so much for your feedback. We'll definitely take it hard, is that it is a balance, kind of a dance between the deeper dive-type interactions and try to cast the wide net and get as many numbers as we can. And so I do want to boost the numbers, but I also want to kind of celebrate the community partnerships and some of that stuff, that we're building. And hopefully that resonates with you all as well.
Absolutely. And I think that was, I was going to clarify is that it seems to be intuitively, and maybe it's completely wrong, that the use of a survey to get to more people is a way to sort of verify some of the things that you're getting in terms of feedback from specific targeted outreach, just to kind of do the test of the information, as it were, with larger numbers. And so I don't know if that's what you're thinking or a part of it or not, but I thought it just a test.
Yeah, absolutely. And where it gets really cool is when you can cross-tabulate and start to pick out differences, and we haven't gotten there yet. But you know, like if, let's say, a renter has a slightly different view on one theme than a homeowner, those types of things are really kind of cool to be able to isolate. So don't have that yet. I'm hoping we can get some of that.
Well, and just in terms of the numbers too, we have to keep in mind that I think some of our, when we have the surveys done, those are, what, maybe 800 people, and they consider that a statistically representative, so.
It's closer to the mayor, it's closer to 300.
300, yeah, so exactly. So, you know, but it's a small number intended, but I think it doesn't, but those are meant for broad swaths of what's going on, whereas a lot of what we're doing is trying to get more detail, as you're saying, quality information. Councilmember.
I appreciate you clearly been doing a lot of homework on this. So thinking about the business outreach, the one piece, we just had a report a few months ago on our business outreach, working with companies that were getting support and website design or other business plans and things like that. Certainly, that's a group that we had some specific targeting of businesses of BIPOC ownership. So maybe they're already part of that.
Connections.
Yep. And then the other piece would be connecting with the Rice-Larfender Alliance, which has a lot of business connections along that stretch, certainly on the Roseville side we're leaning towards, but maybe some relationships that are easy for us to tie into to get some more connections for this business outreach.
Yeah, thank you. I'll make sure they're on the list.
Anything else from the council? All right. Anything else from staff? Otherwise, we want to promote again at the library, Roseville area, Ramsey County Library in Roseville tomorrow evening.
6:30 to 7:30 tomorrow evening.
Tuesday, January 10th.
Right, right, exactly.
There will be hot chocolate.
And I, Mayor, councilmembers, I will send you information on the business survey just in case you want to forward it on to anyone in your network and send that to the line as well.
Great. Thanks again. Appreciate the update. Appreciate your support. Next this evening, another, by way of sort of an update, is to take a look at and consider approving our 2023 Public Works Work Plan, and we have our Public Works Director Jesse Freihammer with us this evening to introduce this, and I'm going to talk for a few more seconds while he's pulling up the PowerPoint presentation, so that will be timed perfectly to him being ready to present. Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yeah, so tonight, we're just going to walk you through kind of what the Public Works Work Plan is for the upcoming year. Just real quickly, before we do that, just wanted to highlight kind of what we did last year, and then kind of lead into what we're planning to do next year. But I won't go through all this in detail, but last year was a very large construction year. We did about nine and a half miles of Millinow overlay, which is probably the highest we've done ever, maybe. Otherwise, certainly a lot of development review. We also provide engineering services for Falcon Heights. Fairly large year for snowpaw events and also for water main breaks. So quite a busy year, and this year's already off to a great start. One of the other things we really looked at last year is sustainability. With our intern last year, we did a lot of stuff, and certainly going into next year, we'll certainly expand on these. But a lot of the Energy Action Plan, stuff like that, working with Excel Energy and a lot of other events that we've really tried to push that. Just real quick on that.
Is there a lot of uptake on that Energy Action Plan and the programs amongst the businesses in the community? Are we still too early in the implementation to really get a sense of it?
You know, I think it's a little early, but we, I know we do have, I can't remember the exact number in that program, but we have had some input and some feedback. So certainly, as we go into next year, we can expand on that. Right. Excellent. And then just a few photos of a few projects we did, kind of our traditional Millinow overlay. Photo on the bottom left is a pond project at Fairview and Sea. You can see that pond a lot more clearly now with the trees that we cleaned up, and then a large retaining wall on County Road C2 that we didn't replace. Some water main project, an underground stormwater project at Simpson and C2 that eliminated, or we hoped that would eliminate some flooding. Pathway project on Lexington and then some paving over by Sienna Green. So next year's project, as you can see by the map, it will be a busy year. I will say it should generally be less impactful than current year. We do not have the large Excel Energy gas project, which did create a lot of chaos. We will have another Excel project. I'll get into that shortly. So next year, for our pavement management plan, which is kind of our big bread and butter project that we do, it will be a lot smaller. We're going to do just about 6.9 miles of Millinow overlay, all on local streets, nothing on any of our major collector streets or state aid roads. And as tying into our discussion about ADA earlier, we will be upgrading all the pedramps with that project, so continue that, which we do every year. Pathway projects, next year, we will be adding four pathway segments proposed of about 0.41 miles. Twin Lakes Trail Phase Two will be the first project that we're looking at doing, and that'll be extension from what we did, I guess, a year ago. So we'll connect this into Oasis Park. Lexington Avenue, this will also be another gap connection. This will connect on the east side of Lexington between Trump Highway 36 and County Road B2. And then Marion Street pathway, this will be an extension from Larfender up to the first phase at the end of the cul-de-sac, so this will connect Unity Park with some better connections. And then Cleveland Avenue, there's a gap on Cleveland Avenue between Iona and Calder Products when Calder built that, kind of created that gap. And then we have a couple of resurfacing projects that maintenance will do on County Road B, Lexington Avenue, within Lexington Park and also the Lexington Park parking lot. And that's just kind of a zoomed-in version of what the connection at Twin Lakes Trail Phase Two would look like, connection into the park. And then we're also going to surface kind of existing blockway that's gravel. Sanitary projects next year, so we are backing off a little bit on sanitary, so this will be the first year, we're not going to do a lining project next year. That'll just be a one-year gap. Otherwise, we are going to replace the Long Lake Lift Station, and then we're going to start work on the Dale Owasso Lift Station, which will be likely done the following year. Water main replacement as well. We did back off on water mains. We don't have any direct water main pipe replacement projects. The big water main project will be painting of the inside of the water tower, so we will end up taking the tower offline, but it'll be internal, so you won't, outside, nothing's really going to look different. But that'll be done here in early spring. And then just some other miscellaneous skater upgrades to make sure we can keep our system operating. So storm storage projects, a couple of random ones, we will be, I don't have this one shown on the map, but we do have a large outlet repair that we'll be doing that goes into Lake Josephine. We'll most likely do that as part of the PMP. Storm pond upgrades, the one project we did award, which is under construction, although not much work has happened, is at Villa Park. We will be dredging that pond and improving some of the old structures in it. That should hopefully be going here in January, but the snow and weather has really delayed that. The other project we're looking to, which is similar, is by Concordia Metals, there's a pond improvement that we're looking to expand upon and get a little more storage into it. And then a couple other miscellaneous things that we're doing, we're continuing to look at our water model, water quality models throughout the city so we can identify improvements and make sure as we, projects come up, we're doing what we can. Also partnering with U of M on some research projects, street sweeping, stormwater functionality, and then partnering with Rice Creek Watership District on some resiliency planning that they're, that will be ongoing next year. The other really large, kind of unique project that we're doing, kind of a first of its kind in Roseville, is on McCarran's, on South McCarran's Boulevard between Woodruff and Glen Hill. We will be rehabbing, I guess, it's not really a replacement, but it's basically reconstructing the existing retaining wall that's there that's showing signs of failure. So we're kind of using a unique way of, they put these soil nails into the wall, and then we'll actually form up a new wall. And with that, we can actually make the new wall look like kind of the old wall, which is a theme we did hear from that neighborhood. So it was pretty remarkable when we showed on the pitch what we could do. It looks good, and that kind of eliminated a lot of concerns we had, potentially we thought we might be losing parking. But that will be a really large project. We will probably have South McCarran's Boulevard between that area shut off for a few months this summer. We will have the pathway open so people can go around the lake, but to vehicles, there will be a little bit of detour. And that's just, the projects, it's not, it just takes a long time to do kind of what they need to do. Otherwise, yes, we will be focusing on a lot of sustainability and recycling, focusing more on Energy Action Plan, less home may education as that resolution will get approved later this evening. Continue doing sustainability newsletters and just kind of updating all things sustainability, looking at EV grants, I know that just came out. And then recycling, certainly looking at preparing for organics, and then also expanding recycling in parks. So a few other outside agency projects, this month is probably going to be the most impactful project in Roseville, is intersection improvements at Highway 36 and Fairview. This will be Minnot led. The overall project is replacing the signal lights at both ramps, as well as the one on the west entrance to Rosedale Mall. The ramps are also going to be reconstructed, and the intersection will get slightly reconfigured. This project is anticipated to begin in June and be done by August, but there will probably be about a six-week detour where both ramps, or one ramp at a time or both at the same time, will be closed. So the main access, if you're coming on 36 to Rosedale, will be via Snelling to B2. So that'll be posted, and we'll certainly work to spread the word on that. Otherwise, other Minnot projects, that's the big one. The other one that will be impactful, at least to Roseville, will be the signal light in front of Cedar Dale that was supposed to have been done late last year, but Minnot delayed because of materials. But that is also supposed to be June through August. Hopefully, that project will go pretty quick. We do anticipate just having that operated as a four-way stop during construction. So access should be maintained at all times, including the Cedar home. Ramsey County projects, also a little lighter on Ramsey County projects this year, which is good, we've had a few busy years. County Road D resurfacing from High Crest to Old Highway 8. The other project that is not in here but got added real late last week was the Old Highway 8 and County Road D related to this, but also Project New Bright is doing, but the Old Highway 8, County Road D signal light will be upgraded. New Bright is converting Old Highway 8 north of D to a three-lane section, and as such, will upgrade the signal accordingly, and that affects the Roseville site slightly. Met Council will not be doing any projects in Roseville next year. And then the watersheds, it's more just working on some modeling projects, so no real specifically identified projects. Excel Energy, so this path is actually updated from what was in the packet. We did find out this morning, it is a little smaller in scope, so they are going to plan to replace and paint poles, but they are no longer going, starting at, on Fairview, they're going to actually start on the northeast corner of Bennett and then go to the east on Rice Street. So we're down to only 44 poles instead of like 80 some poles. But this will be done starting theoretically in March, and then it'll continue into fall, but they do want to do most of this before peak heating, or peak cooling season when electricity is in high demand. But what they're planning to do is take the line out of service, and then they'll either replace or paint poles as they do such. Each pole will take about a week to replace, so they'll just hold the wires as they do that. So there might be some minor traffic impacts, but it should go pretty seamlessly. A lot of this is, especially with this segment now is just along South Owasso Boulevard, so hopefully not too high of impacts. They will, they are currently planning to do a presentation to council, get a little more detail and share or get feedback with council at the January 30th meeting, and then sometime in February, they're looking to do engagement with the public on this project. Few other miscellaneous projects that we're undertaking in Public Works, Public Works Environment Transportation Commission's been working on speed limits, so that's, and we'll be getting into the engagement here later this spring. We did get funding for snelling and county road fees. We'll be doing an intersection study to look at how we can enhance pedestrian improvements in that area. We're working with Minnot to install some battery backups at C2 and Lydia on Snelling. And then also going to start working on agreements with St. Paul and Arden Hills on our water agreements, since those are coming due. And then some projects and planning that are already underway. G Line Bus Rapid Transit is just started. We've had two meetings on that. That's what that graphic on the right is kind of showing where the proposed stops are going to be. So that'll be ongoing. The project is currently funded for, or currently planned for 2027 construction, but that could change. The timing's pretty good because Ramsey County has all of Rice Street in their tip, or I should say most of Rice Street in their transportation improvement plan for the next five years, so it should make planning for that a lot easier. Dale Street, four to three lane conversion or safety improvement, I think is what they call it, between Como and 36 is planned for 2024. There's an open house tomorrow night on that project. And then County Road B reconstruction between Snelling and Lexington, that was originally planned for this year, delayed one year, but that'll be next year, and we'll have some water main improvements with that. And then County Road B reconstruction, the first reconstruction that Roseville has led will be in 2024, so we're also working on that, and we'll be bringing that to council. So with that, I can answer any questions the council may have. If not, we would recommend approval of the work plan.
Great. Questions from the council? Councilmember Braden.
I have a question. I would like to thank you for the work you did with residents on South McCarran's Boulevard and that retaining wall. There was a lot of concern that I heard from residents, and they felt really good by the time you were done meeting with them. So thank you for thoughtfully engaging with them and making changes or bringing forward more information. So thanks for that.
Other questions? Councilmember Braden.
I would echo that. I heard a lot of, a lot of comments this summer when I was door knocking there, and I, you know, there was a lot of communication back and forth, but it sounds like it came out right in the end. The last things I heard were positive, so I wanted to be sure that you had the same feedback after you gave them a final, because I didn't hear anymore. And when they disappear, you think that it's probably going okay, but it's nice to have reaffirmed that that is the case. Other than that, I did have a couple of things that I, oh, the Fairview one is going to affect the area a ton. I live in a lot, so just we have to really be conscientious of letting people know because people use that.
Yeah, and I should add on that, Fairview is anticipated to remain open for that. It might be down to one lane underneath the bridge. It's more the ramps that'll be, that'll be the biggest impact.
Thanks. And Councilmember Shaw.
Yes, thank you for this. This is, I too will echo, I've gotten a lot of great feedback about your department, and feedback about your department, and so that's, you usually don't hear that a lot from, you know, cities, and so you guys do a great job. But I also wanted to point out that I was really pleased to see that in the Equity Impact Summary, that you included the parts for disability individuals, because I think that's really important, particularly in Public Works, that that's something that we keep in mind when we're doing these different things. So I do appreciate that you had the foresight to put it in there already, so thank you.
I did have a couple of questions, and one is just on that Fairview ramp project. I know sometimes pedestrian safety advocates talk about eliminating sort of the bypass, right turn, pork chop island, or whatever you call it, because it's somewhat dangerous for pedestrians. Has that been a factor in the discussions about the design of those ramps, or is that because they're freeway exit ramps, kind of a different creature in terms of that, that aspect? But I know from the point of view of pedestrians, just transitioning from south of 36 to north of 36 on that east side is like a gauntlet.
Yeah, so we did specifically bring that up, basically eliminating that pork chop, which appears to be like that free right. The one thing I should add is that it will be a little, it'll be signed and signaled differently. It's really an enhanced signal. So there'll be additional signage about like flashing no red, or no right turn on red, stuff like that. So it's not going to be the traditional pork chop, like the county removed up, you know, like the rest of the Roseville exits. So it is enhanced. We did have that discussion with MinDOT. The, MinDOT internally has that same conflict of, is it better to remove it completely? They think the signage and the signal work will help make it safer. The alternative is you, you eliminate the pork chop, and then you have a really long intersection to cross, and that's kind of the balance of, you know, if you push the button and you, and you are, you know, less mobile, it takes you a lot longer to cross. That pedestrian refuge island does make it feel a little safer. So it was a balance, but MinDOT thought, since they're doing that enhanced signal, this was the better approach in this case.
Okay. No, thank you for that, and I'm glad it was part of the conversation. And then I just needed to be refreshed. Did we do the segment on Lexington, south of 36 on the east side already as part of the work we've done over the last few years? I was trying to remember. Every time I drive through there, I'm looking right because of all the right turners coming off of 36 as I'm going southbound, so I never think about. Is there, is there a pathway on the, on the east side? Can I feel?
So south, yeah, so south of 36, no. So that is, and next, we have funding from, or partial funding from the county for next year. So next year, we will complete the segment from Shire down to County Road B.
Okay, 24.
That'll be 24, so complete that gap. And then we are anticipating applying for funding to complete from B2 up to Central Park on the east side. So hopefully we can get funding from the county on that.
Okay, so there's, there's still some gaps there?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I wasn't imagining that I wasn't seeing something. I know we had talked last year a little bit about the, the Tamarack Trail, or Tamarack Park Trail connection from that cul-de-sac at western east to Tamarack Park, and I know there was all the, the issues with the, a bunch of the residents there who are using that for their backyard access. Is that sort of conversation still ongoing, but maybe not terribly quickly right now, or where?
That is a conversation that will probably come back to council later this year. Most likely, if we do decide to, to put it in, it would be a 2024 project.
Okay, all right. And then just on the, on the closure at South Was Boulevard for the retaining wall. So you're saying that's a complete closure, then?
Yeah, with staging, with staging that's needed, we'll do complete closure between the two. There's, we'll, there'll be about a few houses that will have to, they'll have access to, but the hard closure will be, you know, in front of the wall itself, which is good. There's really no residents, because they're on the, you have the lakeside there. So the residents, if they currently have access through the zone, they're actually going to have to go around, so it'll be inconvenient for them. But then, like I said, we will have the pathway open, since we know that's very well used in the winter.
And you said a signed detour for vehicles?
Yep, and we'll have a signed detour.
So then that will go south through the neighborhood and then go east?
Correct. It will be through the neighborhood. The, the traffic volumes are, even though it is a busy street, it's only about 900 cars a day, so we don't feel it's worth detouring people to North McCarran's when they're going to go south.
I think we just want to make sure and be very proactive about communicating with the folks along the detour, detour route, and make sure that they're, you know, I don't think we're giving them a veto of the detour necessarily, but we certainly want to make, make sure they're aware of the impact and how long it'll last and those sorts of things.
Yeah, and we, and we did put that detour in place a couple times when we did like soil boring and testing, and I guess we didn't hear any criticism of that. Now granted, it was a lot shorter time period, but, so yeah, we'll certainly take that in mind.
All right, no, I appreciate that. Anything else from the council? Feedback questions? Just to double check, do we have anyone from the public to comment on the Public Works Plan for 2023? Otherwise, we have requests to, by motion, approve the Public Works Work Plan for 2023 as it's been presented. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGraw, seconded by Councilman Schoder. Discussion on the motion. Councilman McGraw is the maker of the motion?
No, lots of work coming up, and I think preparation's good. That explanation was very helpful.
Councilmember Schoder is the secondary.
No, no comments, except that I think it looks good, and you guys have done a great job so far, and looking forward to it.
Any other discussion on the motion? Once again, we have the motion to approve the 2023 Public Works Plan as presented. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes 4 to 0 unanimously. That brings us to consideration of the appointment of the 2023 Acting Mayor for the City of Roseville, and I'll introduce this item. We have, by state law, the requirement to designate a council member to serve as acting mayor, who would take over chairing city council meetings and serving as the mayor in the absence of the mayor, either on a temporary or long-term basis. And so council is able to make a choice on that, and I'm not going to weigh in other than voting on the motion, so it's really up to the council. It's generally, you know, once again, filling in to chair these meetings, and then occasionally there'll be ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings in daytime, things that sometimes acting mayor will fill in. I know both Councilman Ratten and Councilman McGraw have done that before. Councilman Schoder hasn't had a chance yet, and may not want to be thrown right into that right away, so we may have a two- or three-way race amongst the other council members to, to consider that. So I'll kind of throw it open to the council members to think about what they want to do.
Well, my schedule does, oh, go ahead.
Actually, why don't we go ahead?
I was just going to say, my schedule does accommodate if we need to, if I need it. The one time I was acting mayor, there are things during the day that I'm not working on.
Councilmember Ratten, do you want to be the acting mayor in 2023, or are you perfectly willing to defer to someone else?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight anyone. I think I could be just fine. Yeah, I can't go ribbon cutting at 11 a.m.
That's true.
I don't know if that's an important thing.
Uh, Councilmember Schoder?
Well, actually, I was going to put Jason's name forward to be acting mayor, because I felt he's the senior member on the council now. Well, okay, senior in years, sir. Let's just say it that way.
Senior in years, boy, that doesn't sound equally bad.
Sir, sir. And just because that, that is how I was looking at it. Because obviously, I've been here, what, hmm, not quite two hours, so being the junior member on that.
Right. No, I don't think anybody was going to necessarily throw that into your lap right away.
So anyway, that, that was just my thought about it. So I'd like to put his name forward.
Well, what do people want to do? Is there a motion from somebody in regard to acting mayor for 2023?
Well, I'd move to have Jason Etten be the acting mayor.
I'll second.
Is there any, do you wish to refuse that designation?
No, thank you.
I didn't say you wouldn't fight anyone. Okay. So it's been moved by Councilmember Schoder, seconded by Councilmember McGraw, to designate Councilmember Etten as the acting mayor for 2023. Any further discussion on the motion? I know we've kind of covered it fairly well here. All right. Any public comment on designating the acting mayor, right? With that, then, we've got the motion before us to designate Councilmember Etten. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously 4 to 0. All right, that brings us to city council liaisons. And I don't know, Mr. Trechen, if you want to introduce this item?
Yeah, I certainly can. So each year, the council does appoint council liaisons to a certain number of groups that we have need to have representation. That's NYFS, NSCC, the North Suburban Cable Commission, Ramsey County Neighborhood Governments, Visit Roseville, more recently, the Rice Larpenter Alliance Executive Board, and Rice Larpenter Neighborhood and Events Committee. We also, we need to have two council members appointed to the City Manager Performance Review Committee. The last few years, we've also had a council liaison that works on legislative issues as well. But also point out, this case is looking to appoint two persons to the Fire Relief Board, traditionally been the mayor and city manager. So that's included as part of your resolution and your consideration tonight. In the packet, there should be some information who's been serving in the past. I know in a couple cases, I think NYFS and Visit Roseville is kind of a term our members serve, and we point annually, I think NYFS is a three-year term, and maybe Visit Roseville is two. So I think traditionally, we've tried to keep those same people on, so we're not disrupting them in the middle of the term. But with that, I think it's up for the council to decide who wants to be where.
Right, and just to clarify on NYFS, do you know, and Visit Roseville, that's your grab on both of those, do you know where you are in your term, or do you have that information?
I don't have. I think you're probably two years at least into Visit Roseville.
I think I'm two years on each, though.
Okay, so you've been a year ago, so it would make sense to, in terms of the terms, to go ahead and continue in that role, unless there's great dissatisfaction by the council and/or?
Yeah, well, I am the chair on the NYFS board.
We should replace him.
We're going to pull him out of that one.
That would be an awkward time. All right. So that kind of, I think, probably takes care of Visit Roseville and NYFS. I always am willing to stand aside on the Communication Commission, although it was pointed out to me this spring that, that actually the other most senior member is not going to continue to serve anymore on that. And so they, they may want to maintain some institutional memory in the form of me on that board, at least for another year. So we may have to figure that out, but be that as it may. I did, we did hear from, I think that you did as well, from Councilmember Strawn, who indicated the time of the meetings was a conflict for her on being our representative on the Ramsey County Legal Local Governments, so we need to designate somebody else. That's a 9 a.m. on a Friday timeframe. And it's, right now, they're doing Zoom meetings, although that has, has been in person, and I'm assuming we'll get to that at some point in the future as well. And then the Rice and Larpenter Committees. Right now, I'm on the Executive Committee and the Economic Development and Transportation. And then Councilmember Etten is on the
Fund Management.
Livability Party Planning Committee.
Yeah.
Yes. And so I'm, I'm open to defer on, on one of the, one of the two that I'm on right now. I don't know that I need to be involved. And I don't know, Councilmember Etten, if you're willing to continue on the Livability and Events Committee, that would be great.
I hope to continue to be involved with Rice Larpenter. So I've been chairing those parties recently. We're better for words are helping, I should say, chair.
Great music, those bands, like.
Yeah.
What it is.
Bring us to higher.
Then we, of course, have the City Manager Review Committee of two, as well as that liaison to the legislative work. That is currently Councilmember Strawn, who indicated she'd be willing to continue in that role, so designated by the council. And then just a note on fire relief representation. It has traditionally been the city manager, although we prior to the city manager, I think was the city finance director, and then the mayor, but by statute, it can be either two, any two elected officials that the council so designates, and/or one appointed official and an elected official. So we have theoretically some options there, if we want to really kind of open it up here. So it seems that NYFS and Visit Roseville are kind of filled in. What's the next one that somebody wants to really kind of jump in on?
Well, you had mentioned communications. Why don't we get on the road? It makes sense to me. I think it makes sense for the mayor to stay on there. What does everyone else think?
I think it's a great idea.
Let me, let me say that I think it might make sense to perhaps designate an alternate this year that can perhaps be an understudy going into 2024, because I don't, I don't really want that to be
And what do they mean?
The meetings are Thursday, the second or third Thursday of each month at 7 p.m.
Oh, it's an evening.
It's an evening.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to stay as the representative, but I think we might want to think about designating an alternate that can, that can also kind of start learning the ropes there.
Let's come back to that alternate
Okay.
To make sure we get the other things plugged in.
Okay.
Got it.
And then local governments?
Were you interested in that one or no?
The Ramsey County, sure, I'd do that one.
Okay.
It's a good way to.
Well, what it's like is, especially if there is a vacancy there, I'm wrestling someone over it.
Well, we're very content as
Yes, exactly. And I did want to mention with regard to the Ramsey County Legal Local Governments, first of all, obviously, any of us can attend any of those member meetings at the 7:30 Friday timeframe each month. They're very informative, helpful, and a great network opportunity, so that's there. They are also looking for people for their, I think it's called Collective Work Committee, or something like that, where they're, they're advocating for some of the particular positions that the cities that are participating, or the entities that participate are trying to advocate for, whether it's at the legislature or elsewhere. And I did mention that to Councilmember Strawn. It is not a city council appointed, you know, opportunity, so anybody who wanted to could certainly contact the legal local governments, and if you want to be a participant in that, just, you know, get on that way. They haven't set their meeting dates and times for that committee yet, so I think it's a little more, you've got a little more chance to have a say in that. But, so that's obviously not something on our resolution, something we have to designate this evening, but it hadn't been on our radar, I don't know before tonight, so I did want to make sure the council was prepared for that. So it sounds like we're looking at Councilmember Schoder for that?
And the nice thing about having someone designate like this is that she can report back to us. You know, sure, we can all go home, but if none of us are there, then we don't know, so.
Well, it's nice to spread the wealth, as they say, you know, have us all attend as many of these things as we can, so, yeah.
And I think that's a, that's, you know, the obligation. There's, there's a representative from pretty much every member agency, whether it's cities, county, and school boards. Not all of them attend every board meeting, and then they have their, you know, chair, vice chair, secretary treasurer, or sort of the executive committee are more involved. You don't have to take on that role, and we don't designate those people. That's decided amongst the members of the board. But, you know, so, so as far as the commitment, you know, it's definitely those monthly meetings, and then, you know, beyond that, it's like Councilmember McGraw was saying, reporting back to the council on various things that may be of interest to us.
Well, my schedule is such that I, I'm flexible, so being able to do that nine o'clock morning meeting, I think I can work that in my, like, calendar.
Okay. All right, Visit Roseville, we, we talked about, continuing through this term on that. The visit, or excuse me, the Rice Larpenter Alliance Executive Committee. As I said, I could, I could continue on one of the two, but I don't have to remain on both of the two, which the other is the economic development. I don't know if the council members have a particular interest in one or the other of those, or what?
Would you be interested in that, since that's kind of your name? I think you should stay on the executive committee because of your long-term involvement.
Okay. And I can stay on the economic development. I just didn't want to hog all the opportunities.
It wasn't delineated separately before. You just received
It just kind of ended up that way, yeah.
Adding to your life.
Yeah. All right. Standing Subcommittee on the City Manager Performance Review. I know that was Councilmember Etten, Councilmember Willmans before.
Before you go there, this, the packet has met Council Land Use Advisory Committee, which
Okay, it's not in the resolution anymore. I contacted that about that.
Yeah, I was confused by it.
So the online packet.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's definitely not a council
And Neighborhood, Realty and Events Committee.
I think, Councilmember Etten, that's, that's the Rice and Larpenter.
Oh, okay, I heard that same.
Once again, the packet was, the online
It's updated, online.
Yeah.
Paper.
Another argument for having electronic
Nope, no, it's not.
We should have, we should have, we should, I think we should have sent a CSO out.
We know there's three, have.
Yeah, I was like, I was gonna say, I think there's a
There's a majority?
Yes, there's a majority.
Okay. I would, I would be happy to continue on the Manager Performance, City Manager Performance Review Committee, but have done that for several years, so if others want to step in, that's fine.
Well, I'd be willing, because that was Bob's spot, and I'd be happy to take over as some kind of sitting in his chair now. But it'd be nice to have someone who's done it before also stay on, so instead of having two new people.
Why don't you two do it, because I think it is good to. Jason has that, that one, I did it one year with him, and he's got that process of it. It's really helpful when it's your first time.
You're in trouble now.
It is a hard job.
And then we could have
You could certainly have a transition.
Yell and scream and that, it's right.
I know, I know, he's a troll now.
Green screen therapy slash performance review. All right, Council Representative to Legislative Work. I think Councilmember Strawn had indicated she would like to continue in that. I don't know that there's any reason to change, but
No, that's the only one she's on.
Right. Fire Relief?
I'd be interested in that if you, if it was open. I'm not needing something else.
I was going to say, are you?
No.
Other thoughts, or can you be the mayor, too? It's, it's, you know, not a high-pressure assignment. I think that high-pressure assignment. I think it works pretty well.
Stick to meetings a year, I think, or something.
Right, yeah. All the bougie, you can know.
We go to lay.
All right. All right. So it sounds like we'll stick with the designees there.
Sure.
All right. As I see it then, we've got our resolution filled in, other than potentially an alternate on the, on the Communications Commission. Thoughts on that, or?
I can be an alternate on you. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Groff. So, Mr. Trudgeon, have you got all the blanks filled in?
I do now, yes.
Okay.
Got it all set.
So the appropriate motion would be to move to approve the resolution as it's put in the electronic packet with the blanks filled in. And Mr. Trudgeon, would you outline the people?
And so NYFS, Councilmember Groff, NSCC, Mayor Rowe, with Councilmember Groff as the alternate, RCLLG, Councilmember Schroeder, Visiting Roseville, Councilmember Groff, Rice-Larpenter Alliance Executive Committee, Mayor Rowe, Rice-Larpenter Neighborhood and Events Committee, Councilmember Atten, Rice-Larpenter Economic Development and Transportation Committee, Mayor Rowe, City Management Performance Review, Councilmembers Atten and Schroeder, Council Representative to Legislative Work, Councilmember Strawn, Fire Relief Association, Mayor Rowe, and City Manager.
All right. Is there a motion on that resolution?
So.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Atten, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder to adopt that resolution. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Pretty much covered it otherwise. All right. We've got the motion before us to adopt that resolution and make those designations and appointments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously four to zero. And those, that resolution is adopted. Those appointments are made. That brings us to a discussion of any updates we might want to make to the City Council Rules of Procedure for both council, actually, and advisory commissions. Mr. Trudgeon, I don't know if you've got any introductory remarks on this one?
No, I would just say that each year we do look at this, just in case there's any needed changes. We last amended this on January 10th, 2022, about a year ago, where we added some language about the council member initiated agenda items and modified how the agenda layout was and not defined the process, which is on the second page line. Really started in line 101, but that's the last change we've had. But from a staff perspective, I certainly do not have any changes. But it's up to the council. If there's anything else you want to bring up, and we can talk about that if that's the case, and then bring something back to adopt in the future meeting.
And certainly, if we don't make any changes this evening, as was noted, we can make a change anytime during the year if we have something that comes up that we want to. But do the council members have any thoughts about things that maybe aren't working or need to be adjusted, or we should have more discussion about in terms of our rules of procedure? All right. We'll take no action on that item then. And so those rules will remain in place going forward. That then brings us to consideration of a resolution in support, excuse me, I got ahead of myself. Consider a commission of reappointments and declare vacancies for 2023. And Mr. Trudgeon, once again, this is for you to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, once again, annually, this is that type of meeting where we do a lot of things each year. We're looking at the reappointment process and the appointment process for our city commissions. In the RCA, we do outline kind of a calendar of the next steps here. We're having the conversation tonight about commissioners seeking reappointment and declaring any vacancies on the various commissions from folks that may have termed out after two terms or are no longer interested in serving, and then confirming interview dates. So once we do decide on the vacancies, we would advertise, and we are showing that we would advertise until March 1st of this year. That gives us time to get the word out properly and also include information in the March-April newsletter that distributes a little bit of order on that date. We would look to hold interviews to council on separate meeting night. We have two nights slated, March 7th and March 8th. Depending on the need, we'll make two days or one days, one evenings or two evenings. And then we'll look at the March 13th meeting to appoint the applicants for the term beginning April 1st, 2023. And then also, we have orientation already scheduled for new commissioners on March 23rd. So in regards to the actual commissions, Finance Commission has three terms that are up. One vacancy will occur as there is a member that has served two terms. And there are two other members that are out for reappointment, completing their first term, and are interested in serving again. On the HRIC, we have four total commission members up. We have two vacancies for, that need to be filled. One because of the term out of one, and another one that must have left previously and is currently a vacancy. We have two other members that are seeking reappointment after completing. One of them completing the first term and one completing a partial term. Parks and Rec does have two vacancies. One is termed out and another one is certainly eligible but not interested in reappointment, given schedule constraints. Planning Commission does have two members up. One vacancy because the person is terming out and one other one looking for a reappointment. Police Civil Service, we have one person up, and that person is completing the initial partial term and is eligible and interested in reappointment. Finally, Public Works Department and Transportation, we have the two members up. One is completing their first term and not interested in reappointment. And one, the other person is termed out and completed their second term. So all in all, we have one vacancy for sure. We know we need to fill in Finance, two in HRIC, two in Parks and Rec, one on Planning, none on Police Civil Service, and one on P-WET. That's assuming that you would reappoint the existing ones, obviously. If you don't reappoint the existing ones, there are more vacancies. In regards to that, we have included information about, per our policy, about the attendance of those members. One thing that was brought to my attention before the meeting that we do not have included or share the information with the council is under our policy, we do ask the commission chairs to weigh in on that person's service. We do not have that information for you tonight. So if that is something that you do want to see, I would suggest we table this action tonight. We could bring that back on the 23rd, which is our next meeting. That should not really impact our schedule. We'll be able to continue to move ahead as outlined before. So that's for council discussion, if you'd like to have that. If you do want to move ahead here, the three actions we would be looking is to reappoint those that are interested in being reappointed, to declare the vacancies that I just read, and then just approve the dates and the schedule that we have in front of you. So.
With that, I will pause and perhaps answer any questions. Right. And Mr. Trudgeon, too, it would seem that conceivably, we could, if we want to get that information from the chairs on the people who are eligible for reappointment, we could not take action on the reappointments this evening. It would seem also that we could take action on the vacancies, declaring the vacancies that are just simply because of people terming off or not being able to serve or having resigned. So we can at least get the process going. That's outlined in the schedule. If we approve the schedule as well, and then just specifically take up, if we wish to, that reappointment question, which either does or doesn't create additional vacancies at that point. And we've already got a process underway anyway. Just a thought in terms of that.
We certainly could, unless the council think it might impact how we want to message if we have, instead of one vacancies, we have two vacancies or three vacancies for a commission. We're asking credit cast to widen that. Obviously, we always skip more than the vacancies. So probably wouldn't hurt us. But we would start some initial push out of information. The big push would be in the newsletter. And we don't believe that moving into 23rd would impact that either way. So we can still keep that. But it's up to the council.
No, I just wanted to put that out there. Councilmember Atten?
I would move to table the appointments, I'm sorry, the reappointments, because we don't have that feedback from the chairs. And I'm curious about that, as tying in with some other information we have. So I would like to have that before we do the reappointments.
I would second that because some of these have not been at the meetings either. So I want to know what the chair thinks of that, whether there were reasons for those.
So this is specific to the reappointment question.
Yes.
Table that. And there's no discussion on the motion to table. So we can proceed right to a vote on that. All those in favor of tabling the consideration of reappointments, the first action item requested in the packet, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously four to zero. And we will table that action. The motion related to the declaration, declaration of vacancies and the schedule and process, otherwise outlined.
Here, I would move those two pieces.
I'd second it.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Atten, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder to approve or declare the vacancies, otherwise outlined this evening, and approve the process that's outlined for the appointments and the schedule. Discussion on that motion, Baker, the motion, Councilmember Atten?
Any questions I would have? Still, there are openings on those commissions. So if someone's interested in such a commission, they will still probably be applying, no matter how many spots are there. So I think this, we can get this rolling, get some communication out there and refine it if we need to.
Additional discussion, second of the motion, Councilmember Schroeder.
I agree. I think the more time we have getting the word out and having people apply, the better.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Atten?
I was curious. It looks like the information from the people are rea, looking for reappointment, is their initial application, is that correct? Did we normally have folks spell something out?
We do not. I don't believe we have.
I thought we did. I thought we have. I thought we did. I was kind of surprised by that. That was another piece.
Okay. Well, I'll double check.
Double check.
My apologies. Done a couple of weeks to check. Yeah, we do. I was going to say that is a good point, Councilmember Atten.
Oh.
We do still have the motion before us. The only other point of discussion I did want to make was that we actually get people applying for commissions that have no openings on them as we have our process. So I don't see a problem, you know, getting the process going, even if we're not sure how many vacancies there's going to be, because I honestly don't think that the people applying think about that necessarily. All right. We've got the motion before us, once again, to declare the vacancies and to approve the reappointment process and schedule. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously four to zero. And that item is concluded for this evening. That brings us then to item 7H, which is to consider adopting a resolution in support of creation of a local sales tax in Roseville. And I'll turn it over to City Manager Trudgeon to use this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you most likely are aware, last year, the council as a whole adopted a resolution supporting the creation of a 0.5% local option sales tax to Roseville to fund three projects, the maintenance facility, the license center, and a pedestrian bridge over Highway 36. We did make good progress in the last session, had some public hearings, and were included in both the House and Senate omnibus tax bills. But as you know, the legislature last year failed to pass anything, including the omnibus tax bill. So we are bringing this forward again, based on conversation previously with the previous council and part of our legislative priorities. And one of the criteria for us to initiate the process and begin it again, is for the City Council to pass a resolution stating that they're asking for a 0.5% local option sales tax and describe some information about the project and regional significance and have attachments. These are all things we did last year. So I'm bringing forward pretty much the same information as we had last year. But there is a couple of market, market differences. One, they're asking for more dollars than we previously. As you know, we have completed the maintenance civic campus master plan and part of the maintenance facility and license that we have. Better estimates, better being more thoughtful, not necessarily good for the bottom line, because they went up tremendously. For both the maintenance facility and the license center, if you recall, we used a pretty high inflationary rate as part of that. So while you never know what the future brings, we just experienced a very high year of inflation. If that continues, we do have some extra dollars built in for that in case it does go high. We would not be able to, if this was approved tonight and approved by the legislature and approved by the local electorate in 2024, the likelihood of us starting in '25, '26 is more realistic. So we're still several years out. So you have to try to project ahead on what those costs would be. And, you know, there's a lot of supposition there and speculation. So in any case, we do have the numbers from that study that we're using as part of this. We're asking for a total of $76.9 million over 20 years. If you recall, our number was less than that, 65 million or so, I think, last year for 16, yeah, 16 years, 65 million. So we're asking about 20 years and 76.9. We also did remove the project about the pedestrian bridge. One, I know there was some council conversation around that last year. But more importantly, the amount of project costs that have gone up, we just can't even consider that to be a potential project here. So the way that breaks down is the city maintenance facility, it costs $64.2 million, and the license center at $12.7 million. And looking at 2019 numbers, which are really the best numbers that are out there for kind of non-COVID years, we would generate about $5.4 million annually in a 0.5 cents on sales tax. Over 20 years, we'd estimate $108 million, which would cover the cost of the project plus debt issuance cost and debt payback, that cost. So with that in mind, once again, this is kind of for some of those folks that have been on the council for a while. This is something we've talked about for a while, as well as the resolution. So we did update the resolution to indicate our request has changed from the previous year. I would note in the packet, I do have some language regarding the equity impact, racial equity impact. As most of us know, sales tax is fairly regressive, meaning that folks of lower income pay more, higher percentage of their income for a sales tax as a person that is making a million dollars. And so that's something that's very clear. That's innate in the system of sales tax. It's not unique to this particular project. I would note in the state of Minnesota, sales tax is not charged for clothing and grocery. So it does help make some of the most basic needs. And if you took a look at that executive summary of the report that I included, it called out Minnesota being, sales tax is the last regressive. This means it's not regressive. So this is a factor we want to bring forward, knowing that it is regressive and may impact people of lower income. Unfortunately, some of those large decisions about how we tax our communities is done at the state and federal level and is beyond us. And this is the framework that we're currently operating in. But I think it's important to at least acknowledge and call out for your consideration. So with that, and I did update Attachment A, kind of what the other cities have been doing. Councilmember Schroeder, we did have comparison data, 0.5% Ramsey County taxes for transit improvement that they adopted in 2017.
Is that ongoing forever?
I believe so, yes. Yeah, moving forward, yeah. So this gives you some comparison, Attachment A, of where we would stand with some surrounding communities in the metro. But I also added a section of the cities that have approved the sales tax, both by the legislature and approved approval from the voters in 2022. And many of them are within the metro area as well. Just wants to get passing for, or sharing for your information. So with that, we got the resolution as Attachment B. The attachments to that would be in Attachment C, the documentation of regional significance. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. I would note that we do need to, if we're going to do this, send that resolution and supporting materials down to the chairs of various legislative committees by January 31st of this year. So timing is somewhat of the essence.
Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there questions from the council on the proposed resolution and going to the legislature for the authority to go to the voters for a local option sales tax? Questions for staff? Councilmember Schroeder?
And I know we had a conversation about this, but I did want to, you did, I know there was some conversation with businesses out there, the thought being they're the ones that are going to be collecting and keeping track of, you know, that. So I just wanted to make sure that we loop them into conversations on this. I think that's important. And my understanding is, because I know the timing is very short on here, but my understanding is if we pass this tonight, and then it goes to the state, and once they approve it, it comes back, and then we have to approve it again at that point, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And it's outlined in number three on the first page. And thanks for bringing that out. That's important to note that once the legislature passes, we have to, we, me, the council, you have to pass and reaffirm that resolution, and then get ready to put it to a referendum vote. So there is an opportunity, I suppose, to change your mind after legislative approval, if it's not the appropriate time to do it.
And that was key for me to understand that, because I know the timing is, because I know I have a number of different questions. And I realize that you have probably asked a lot of those already. And so I would not stand in the way to approve this, because I know we have time then once it comes back. If there's, after a number of other discussions, we can always change it later. But because of the time constraints, I would not get in the way of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Schroeder. Are there other questions for staff? And I did want to just point out, too, I think that under the process, we have to adopt whatever it is we have to adopt to get it on the ballot in 2020. whatever it is we have to adopt to get it on the ballot in 2024, at least 90 days prior to that election, if I may understand correctly.
Correct.
I don't know if it was 90 days prior to the election or 90 days prior to the date that it has to get on the ballot, but one way or the other, we have up until that deadline to do that action, presuming any action by the legislature this year. And as City Manager Trudgeon pointed out, the request for '22 was actually in the omnibus tax bill along with all the other requests, and just that bill wasn't passed by the legislature. I did want to, just in fairness to the legislature, you had said that the legislature didn't pass anything last year. I think they passed a couple of them.
I'm sorry.
Not tax bill. But yeah, so that. Also, if there's no further questions, then we'll open it up for members of the public. And once again, we have the three-minute time limit. We just ask that you introduce yourself by name and address or street for the record and direct your comments or questions to the council, doing the best we can to answer those, if there are questions.
Okay. Mayor Rowe, senior acting mayor, etan.
Oh, there you go.
And council members. My name is John Kiselishin. Starting back with the, you want an address, 3083 Victoria Street. Starting back with the 1996 legislative session, I probably attended a couple of hundred House and Senate Tax Committee and Tax Conference Committee hearings. So there are a couple of things I wanted to maybe point, facts for this council to think about. As the staff report indicates, this proposal will shift at least $108 million from the property tax to the sales tax. That's what it essentially does. Number two, as the staff report states, both the sales tax and property tax harm low-income and minority groups. Now, as a side point, the staff report is incorrect about the income tax. Low-income people don't pay income tax. Number three, last time I reviewed the list of the largest property taxpayers in the city, I believe Rosedale was number one, Harmer Mall number two, various strip malls, three, four, and five. Believe Paper Commonson on 280 and 35W is on the list, oil terminals, and warehouses on the west side of town. Those are the biggest property taxpayers in town. Number four, shifting millions from the property tax to the sales tax harms low-income and minority groups from receiving state assistance from the property tax refund program. And I'm not making this up. This is actually in state law, 297A, 0.99 subdivision 1A. Specifies it right there in black and white. And for everybody's information, there is no sales tax refund program that exists in this state. Number five, in the past five years, there's been a massive expansion of home delivery of almost every product available imaginable. Sales tax in Roseville was once considered a tax primarily paid for by non-city residents, and that has changed. Today, more than ever, this will hit, a sales tax will hit low-income minority groups who try to take advantage of savings from using online buying and delivery to their home. They're going to have to pay this tax. So the conclusion that I have here, and this is the question that I want everyone to ponder here, why would this council vote yes on a proposal that will harm low-income minority groups from obtaining the largest property tax refund possible? Why would you do that? Number two, why are you voting yes for what essentially will be a multimillion-dollar tax break to Rosedale, Harmer Mall, and the wealthiest corporate landowners in this city? Think about that. These are the people that pay the most property taxes in this city. You're shifting it away from them to people. So with all the respect, I believe that the council owes the community an explanation as to what their position is on this broader issue of shifting $108 million from the property tax to the sales tax and the broader implications that has for the community. With that, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. You're only 45 seconds over. All right. With that, is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak to this item? Thank you for the input and the information, and thanks to staff for the information in the staff report as well. Council discussion on the, well, actually, a motion and/or discussion on the resolution to support the issuance of a local option sales tax in Roseville? Is there a motion from the council?
I move approval of that sales tax.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Etten to adopt the resolution in the packet going to the legislature for their approval of the sales tax. Discussion on the motion, make the motion, Councilmember Graff.
Well, those were interesting points that were made, but I do think that we are a hub that still attracts people from out of Roseville to purchase things that could be taken in the sales tax. And this is one way of defraying the cost to the local taxpayers on that amount of money. And it'll be coming from the greater area, and it will also be going towards things as required in this to the greater good, because the Public Works Building will be maintaining roads and taking care of all the infrastructure that gets used by everyone, including the busysters of Roseville.
Thank you, Councilmember Graff. As the second of the motion, Councilmember Graff.
I'll just agree with that for now. Just agree.
I disagree with that. You just agree with that.
Yes.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? I would just add that there's nuance to the points that were made in, some of the points that were made in the public comment. One of the things that Councilmember Graff brought up is that there is a significant portion of the sales tax that is paid by people outside of Roseville, and I think that is what we've been hearing from residents about that, that it's the local taxpayers right now under the property tax system that are paying for the maintenance of facilities that are used by employees and shoppers and people that come to Roseville to do commerce. And as I was talking with others, it's not necessarily always, although it does to a certain degree include city streets, because city streets are often where businesses are addressed, even if access comes via state or county roads. But there's also significant utility supply, as we know, water and sewer, for all sorts of entities that conduct business in the community, and those services are provided for their customers or employees who are oftentimes not residents of the community. And so the notion in trying to address one of the questions and concerns that comes from residents is that that part of sort of the bill for a lot of the services provided in Roseville should be paid by a lot of the users who aren't necessarily residents or local businesses. And so a sales tax is an opportunity to diversify that source of funding. And by state law, we can't adopt a local sales tax to pay for, say, police services or fire services. It has to be for specific capital-type projects. By definition, they have to be of a regional impact. And so I believe that what we're talking about here meets those requirements and also meets the desire of our residents to have that diversified source of revenue that comes from people who aren't all necessarily residents or businesses in our community. The other thing is the tax shift that was talked about, the $108 million from property taxes. First of all, we're not currently collecting $108 million in property taxes. So it's a shift of the future responsibility for this expenditure from property taxes to a local option sales tax. But I would point out that that shift isn't entirely from Rosedale and Harmer. That shift is from Rosedale, Harmer, oh, and also all of the residential taxpayers in the community. So it's everybody that currently pays property tax that would potentially be on the hook for property tax for the bill for this maintenance facility and the license center, you know, not just those couple of taxpayers that were mentioned. So for those reasons, I'm supportive of pursuing this, as was noted by Councilmember Shorter. We do have a couple of other opportunities, and ultimately, we have the intent to make the decision whether to put it on the ballot for our voters for 2024, and so we'll have a chance to have those further conversations. And I do take to heart that we need to continue to age our business community as well as our residents on this matter, both in '22 and this year. Because of the January 31st deadline, I don't know that we've had a lot of great opportunity to do that engagement prior to passing the resolution. So I think it's worth acknowledging that, but also acknowledging the other comments that I made. Is there any other discussion, Councilmember Graff?
And just ultimately, this goes to the voters, so they will, it has to pass on the ballot.
Correct. All right, if there's no further discussion, we have the motion to adopt the resolution as outlined in attachment B, approving going to the legislature for approval of a absent local option sales tax as outlined. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes in two to the amm c four to zero, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you to everyone involved in this and more to come on that. Next, item seven I, which is consider adoption of Roseville's 2023 legislative priorities. And let's get on to this opportunity, Mr. Trudgeon, to introduce back to us for our final consideration.
Yes, and my apologies, my mouse isn't working up there, so I was have to come down here. I wanted just to pull up legislative priorities and show attachment A. The previous council did.
If you can zoom that a little bit.
Yeah.
Just to get a wider view for everybody.
Please have to talk.
That's going to be tough. If you just go, there's a button right there that has the two arrows pointing to each other. Take assistance from the mayor and senior.
This is all improvised here, so I didn't practice this. So as outlined in the packet, we've been talking as a council on the city for the last couple of years about legislative priorities and kind of narrowed it down to this list here. We have the high priority items, which most of you are familiar with, one of them being the local sales tax we just talked about, as well as the bonding. Remaining items are other priorities that we support that other agencies and organizations directly advocate. From our last conversation on November 28th, we did add this last bullet point. The council asked us to add this idea more than anything else, so we put some words behind it, and I really want to make sure the council takes a look at that, make sure it captures what the intent was of the council on the November 28th meeting. I'd also mention that Mayor Rowe has suggested additional item to add through Ramsey County's youth violence prevention, and you can certainly speak to that. That might be something for you to consider. But everything else that you see here is what was presented on November 28th, and we discussed, with the exception of that last bullet point. And once again, I'm looking for input on the language on that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Thoughts from councilmembers on especially the added language on the last bullet or anything related to the other items that we may have had second thoughts about or further thoughts about since our previous discussions? Councilmember Graff?
That last item, it's a lot, but I think that's the right idea. So thank you for working on the lot.
And a shout out to Community Development Director Gunlock and Building Official Dave England, really helping me with that language, so.
Councilmember Graff?
Yeah, I think that says what we talked about. Could be more succinct, maybe, but I'm not going to work on that. I do think increasing the fees allocated to local deputy registrars may be higher up than there, but it's in our.
We didn't really necessarily say there was priority within the list.
No, okay.
But people can infer that from where we put it.
Well, I just mean from there to up to.
Oh, up to the top part. Okay, I see.
I know there's been some things in the news about it. It seems like it might be coming up this year, but I don't know. I know the legal metro cities is working on that.
Yeah, as well as the group of registrars, Register Association.
Exactly. Exactly, why it's in that lower tier, because there's some other organizations carrying the bucket.
Be nice if they need a letter from us or something.
Other thoughts on the existing list? I did just want to note then on the item, the Ramsey County request for the youth violence response, that attachment, thank you, Council, or thank you, Mr. Trudgeon, for putting it in the packet. I was at a meeting, I'm part of a group, the Ramsey County Youth Violence, I said Violence, broadly Violence Prevention Leadership Group, and it's kind of, you know, out of the county attorney's office, and one of the topics that they talked a lot about is that it's sort of the gap in terms of dealing with youth violence offenders. Obviously, the old model, the totem town type, isn't there anymore, and straight up incarceration doesn't always work in every situation. So what they're trying to do is trying to get funding and support for more of a residential sort of middle option between those two sort of extremes of essentially not doing anything and incarceration for especially these young offenders. And it sounded like something that made sense to maybe be supportive of. Once again, we're not taking the lead on it. I don't know, you know, we could add it as an item on the second list, which is those items that we don't take the lead on. I don't know that we have to put our voice behind it either necessarily, although obviously that can be helpful at the legislature. So I'd be happy to, to the best I can, answer any questions about that. But otherwise, just wanted to make sure it was something we were thinking about as we went to the legislature with our priorities or the things we're advocating for. Councilmember Graff?
Reading through it, I think it sounds like an excellent program and might fill a gap. I just was wondering if you know the difference. I think I know the answer, but Northeast Youth and Family Services has the diversion program. So that is a day program, I think, so you wouldn't.
Right. It's not a residential program.
It's a residential, so they'd be having a little more intensive, and they would be.
Right, so diversion is closer to the no program at all, but it's for those, especially non-violent typically offenses, they have an opportunity to do restitution and, you know, engage in civic projects or civic understanding and education, those sorts of things. And so that's, once again, primarily for non-violent offenders. I think for the violent offenders, it's really incarceration or sort of just continuing to repeat offending. And I don't think, you know, I don't think incarceration is the best environment for people who have a chance to be kind of pulled back from that, that potential future life. And at the same time, sometimes going back to your home situation or lack thereof isn't always a great solution either. And so that's what was being advocated for by the county folks, and just wanted to, once again, bring to the council's attention. If it doesn't end up on our list, I think it's something that it's good to be mindful of anyway, and I know, you know, there's a potential that it can help, certainly with our dealing with violence in our community as well. It's not always just sort of the same call issue, it's more broad. So once again, just wanted to give you a little more background and thoughts on it. It's up to the council really as to whether we want to add that. Councilmember Shorter?
You know, reading this part of it, I would support adding it to the list, because I think you're right. We do need to have another alternative, except between incarceration and do nothing. And I think this would be something that we should add. It just makes sense to me as well.
Any other thoughts on that? Any objection to adding it to the list? Probably a better way.
No objection.
No objection. Good. And why don't we add that as a bullet item to the list? Language to be, it's going to be words not outside of this meeting. All right, and actually, you just reference the title of the proposal and the bill numbers and kind of done. Anything else related to this from councilmembers? I do want to just provide an opportunity for members of the public, if anybody from the public wishes to speak to the proposed legislative priorities for the city of Roseville? Seeing none, then is there a motion to adopt the city's legislative priorities as outlined with the addition of the Ramsey County Youth Violence Response Proposal?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by, we can track it, we're in here, moved by Councilmember Shorter, seconded by Councilmember Etten. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Shorter is the maker. Councilmember Etten is the second. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of this motion to adopt those priorities signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes in two to the amm c four to zero. All right, that brings us to consideration of council minutes. We've got two sets of minutes from our November 28th and December 5th council meetings. We've had a chance to review those and provide feedback, and the updated drafts have been presented to the council for our consideration this evening. Are there any further changes or corrections that need to be made from councilmembers or a motion to approve one or both of those?
I'm going to approve both. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Etten to approve both sets of minutes, seconded by Councilmember Graff. Once again, these are the November 28th and December 5th, 2022 minutes. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Etten?
I just, I don't know, Shorter knows, but we typically abstain if we weren't there.
Well, that's what I was just going to say, because I wasn't, yeah.
The only exception to that is if you happen to have subsequently seen the meeting and agree that the minutes are accurate representation of the meeting, you certainly are perfectly willing to vote, but.
Because when the mayor says, you know, either say yea or nay, he doesn't give you that third option.
There is a third way.
Right, so that's why.
Don't abuse it too much.
Right, I was going to say, don't abuse it. All right. So we've got the motion before. So we've got the motion before us to approve those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Me.
All right. So that passes three to zero with an abstention from Councilmember Schroeder having not attended. So those minutes are approved. That brings us to our consent agenda then, items A, once again, through L. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon to give us a brief summary of those items for our consideration this evening.
Thank you. I'm down here at the table. My mouse does not seem to work. It's a backup mouse, so my apologies. So agenda item 10A approves payments amount of $4,712,969.72. Item 10B approves a temporary liquor license to Ben Perstillery for an event to be held on January 28th on their premises. Item 10C approves several expenditures for replacement equipment for the Parks and Recreation Department and the Public Works Department. This item also approved updates to the SCADA system and other controls to monitor the pressure in the city's water tower. This action finally also authorizes the sale of Parks and Recreation and Public Works equipment that will help reduce the cost of the new equipment we are purchasing. Item 10D approves the US Bank and BMO Harris Bank as the city's official bank depository for city funds and designates the Finance Director with the authority to make electronic fund transfers. Item 10E designates the Pioneer Press as the city's official newspaper. Item 10F approves annual sign permits in 2023 for a variety of city-led and sponsored events. Item 10G approves the Community Development Department Codes Coordinator, Building Official, to act as the Assistant Weed Inspector to help out Mr. Mayor in his local weed inspector role in the city. Item 10H authorizes the City Manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with IAFF Local 5051, the firefighters, recognizing June 10th as a city holiday. Item 10I authorizes staff to seek donations to help defray the cost of city-hosted events for the community. A listing of all the events where donations will be asked for is contained in the RCA. Item 10J approves adopting a resolution to enter into an agreement with Minnesota Department of Transportation for federal aid participation. Item 10K adopts resolution approving the reappraisal of assessments in 2023. And item 10L adopts resolution supporting less mo ma in Roseville. And that's the consent agenda.
Great, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Is there a motion on the consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Etten, seconded by Councilmember Graff. Any discussion on the consent items, Councilmember, ahead?
I've been thinking about this, less mo ma. What about minimal mo ma? It just rolls better. Maybe mo ma?
Maybe mo ma?
Maybe mo ma.
Kind of rolls right off the tongue. For further consideration by staff, how's that? We'll still pass the resolution, hopefully.
We think.
We think?
Maybe mo ma.
Anyway, any other discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously for a zero and we have our consent items. We just then have future agenda review, communication reports announcements. Mr. Trudgeon on the future agenda?
Yes, so no meeting next Monday, Martin Luther King Junior holiday. So our next meeting is January 23rd. We'll start off the evening at 6:00 p.m. Very short EA meeting. We have two items. One is to recognize the recipients of the Roseville Sustainable Stewart Award as well as select officers for the EA. So it should be about a 15-minute meeting or so. Regular council meeting, we do have a couple of items to take up. We do have a public hearing to consider renewable liquor license for Two and Paul that's Hill Grumby's. They previously had issued one in 2022. They've not opened yet, so this is technically a renewal, but they have plenty to operate. We unfortunately do have some failures for tobacco violations and alcohol violations. As you know, we typically do each year. Last couple of times, we've had higher numbers than we had in the past. I'll tell you, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we'll be considering those violations. We also want to bring back city code regarding massage therapy. The previous councils talked about it a couple of times last year, so we want to bring that back up for disconfirmation. This is the direction we want to go and answer any questions and look to pass them to you in the near future. I would note that we do have city council photos that evening prior to the meeting. I'd say at 5:00, we'll probably do some department head groups. So maybe at 5:30-ish or so, if you want to have individual headshot and you're more than welcome, we'll do a group photo somewhere between 5:30 and 5:45. We'll send out more information and reminder on that to get closer to it. And then our next meeting in January is on the 30th. We have a couple of proclamations. We'll have Twin Cities North Chamber here to make a brief presentation. Public Works Director Freyhammer alluded to this, the Excel presentation in 2023 Power Pole Project in Roseville. This is a little bit more specific information and not only for the council but for the public as well, so we'll have them join us. We will have a Parks and Recreation Commission joint meeting. I believe Director Johnson sent an email out to the council on the May topics we'll be discussing is the renaming of Pobonnis Park, but it also provided a broader overview of everything that they've done this past year. We'll also begin a conversation about the Phase 2 zoning code update. Janice Gunlock, Community Development Director, will be here and share information of what we've been working on and the planning commission has vetted a little bit too. So we will, yeah, I have declared commission vacays.
It's like you knew.
I must have known.
Did you hear in the weekly from what I was saying?
So this covers a lot of other, a little bit more discretionary zoning code changes such as shorelands and environmental stuff. So we want to bring it forward, there's a lot there, so we'll bring it forward just to introduce it to you and have a conversation. We're not looking into any passage on that evening. But I would also mention what's not on here is we will be looking to rescind the moratorium on THC edibles. We have that still officially in effect. We have a licensing scheme in place now. We have to formally rescind it for it to go away. Our new city attorney has already drafted an ordinance and we're ready to go and it's posted on the website, we'll take that up. But we have the proper regulatory framework in place now, so we don't need that moratorium. We have to take an action directly to rescind that, so that will be on the agenda as well. Actually, I'm sorry, that's going to be on the 23rd. So that will come forward.
Great, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there any questions on the upcoming agendas from council members? Any council member reports or communications or announcements or council member-initiated items for future meetings? All right. Well, congratulations to Councilmember Schroeder on completing her first meeting successfully and surviving. We look forward to hopefully coming back for future meetings. And unless there's anything else, the only item left on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Graff. No discussion on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously for a zero and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.